Welcome to the special meeting of Perth and Kinross Integration Joint Board to make nominations for the Appointment Subcommittee for the Chief Officer vacancy for the Health and Social Care Partnership. The meeting is carried over from Friday and we are now ready to start again to determine this issue. Scott, do you want to take the names under any apologies, please?
Thanks Chair, it's Adam, I'll actually do that this morning if that's okay. Okay, thanks members. When I call out your name, if you can just indicate whether you're present in the meeting. Councillor Drysdale.
Present.
Councillor Duff.
Present.
Councillor McDade.
Present.
Councillor Purvis.
Present.
Donald MacPherson.
Present.
Sorry, I missed. Bob, we know you're there, so I'll skip past you. Beth Hamilton.
Present.
Call Patrick.
Present.
Jackie Pepper. Jane Smith.
Present.
Sarah Dickey. Dr Sally Peterson. Dr Lee Robertson. Sandra Ald.
I see Sandra has the same problem as others. If she could be given access to sound, but she is present.
Yeah, I can see her as well, thanks. Lyn Blair.
Present.
Bernie Campbell.
Present.
Lindsay Glover. Stuart Hope. Ian McCarterney. Again, I can see Ian on the camera there, I think he's having issues on muteing, so. Maureen Summers.
I see Maureen has in the chat saying can't get into meeting.
Right, okay, we'll try and, we'll try and help her in the background. And Sandy Watts. So the only apologies we had submitted this morning Chair were from Ronnie Erskine.
You're on mute Chair.
Right, thank you very much indeed. We are now ready to reconsider the issue that we had before. Scott, can you guide us what you wish us now to do in terms of making fresh motions etcetera? I think it would be quite helpful for members who have not been involved in this before.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that Chair. Apologies, you may just want to clarify if there's any declarations of interest before we move on to the main item.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that, that was, you're correct. Any declarations of interest? Okay.
Chair, I noticed that we've got a point of order from Councillor McDade in the chat, so maybe to clarify what that is.
Yes, Councillor McDade.
Thanks Chair, I just wanted some clarity actually in terms of Mr Erskine was mentioned as an apology but looking at NHST side board website, he is no longer a member of the NHST side board. So I was just assuming that Donald MacPherson had been appointed as a permanent member. But if we could just get some clarity on that.
Thank you for that. It's obviously come up prior to this. I raised this, I raised the issue with Scott Hendry earlier on and as Scott will probably see is that until they receive a formal notification from Margaret Dunning, the Board Secretary for NHST side, it's not actually in the, in the public ether, although it's probably well known. So that situation. Scott, can you say anything other than that? I don't think it changes the status of anything.
Yeah, I will, I will speak to Margaret Dunning, the Clerk at NHS Board. The usual practice is that NHS Board would advise myself as the Clerk to IGB if there's any resignations or changes in membership. So I'll seek clarity on that straight after the meeting. So if it is the case that Mr Erskine is no longer a member, then I assume that Donald MacPherson will be substituting for the proxy position or proxying for the vacant position as has been the case in the past. But I'll seek clarity and I'll advise the Board as soon as possible after the meeting.
That is my understanding that Donald does the proxy.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to understand because obviously proxy is slightly different from a substitute proxy is usually for somebody, so that's helpful clarity, thank you.
Thank you for that. And thanks for asking for the question Sandra, I appreciate it. Okay. Scott, do you want to take us through the process now?
Yeah, in terms of process, and I know that there were some members who weren't at the meeting on Friday, so in terms of standing orders, there was a division and a vote on the report on the agenda on Friday. However, there was no consensus reached amongst the voting members to determine that particular item of business. So in terms of standing orders, it was to be reconsidered at a special meeting as soon as possible, which the Board agreed on Friday would be this morning. My suggestion Chair is that, given that there are some members who weren't at the meeting on Friday, you may want to offer the opportunity to ask any questions on the report and then we just move into, once again, considering the recommendations in the report and seeking the views of the Board on them.
Well, the, I take it everyone who wasn't present at the meeting had read the paper that was circulated and we had two speakers from recruitment, from HR and we also had the legal officer in attendance as well. The paper had asked for nominations for four voting members of the IGB who will form part of the Appointment Subcommittee. Basically, if there are any questions about that, we were unable to reach a decision on this. A substantive part of the discussion, I should say, was about the role of public partners. And I think we had some, I think, very useful, I think a greater understanding about how that could work at the end of day as part of the appointment process. And indeed, I've considered a motion myself this morning that would incorporate that. But if any members who weren't present at the meeting want to ask some questions about that. I don't hear that. I have a question from Councillor, oh no, sorry, I've got Ian Jewish to ask question. Can you put your unmute please? I can't. Ian, can I, can I give you a moment to try and unmute please? And it's obviously not, not happening. I'm going to move to a question from Callum Purvis and then I'll come back to Ian if he's been able to unmute. Councillor Purvis.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to ask the Council Chief Executive because I see he's been able to join us this morning and wasn't able to join us at the last meeting. And one of the issues that he's probably aware came up was around the involvement of public partner, of our public partner on the interview panel. And there was not a clarity at that point about whether yourself and the Chief Executive of NHST side would be comfortable with that. There was a clear view, I think, from a large number on the IGB that the public partners should be involved, given their valuable insight that they bring to the Board. And I just wondered if perhaps you could outline your position on that.
Chair, if you're content, I'm happy to respond to the question. Sandy Thomas, thank you.
Thank you Bob. Yeah, unfortunately, the Chief Executive of NHST side has been off for the last 10 days. But I did manage to speak to Stuart Lyle within NHST side on Friday, we had a discussion then. The position remains that both NHST side and the Council are content that in terms of the recruitment process for senior officers within NHST side and within the Council, this has been a model that we have adopted previously. It was the model that was adopted in terms of my own appointment, it was the model that was adopted recently in terms of the Chief Officer Angus. So the proposal in terms of the voting members from NHST side and the voting members from the Council is the proposal that we would propose, supporting, continue to support, along with the offer to involve public partner directors in that recruitment process through the involvement in the Stakeholder Group.
Callum, does that answer your question?
It does, but not in the way that I would have liked to, thank you.
I'm going down the list here. Sandra Ald, do you wish to ask a question? Is it in relation to the question that was raised by Councillor Purvis to the Chief Executive?
Yeah, it was exactly, yeah, I was just looking for feedback on how things had been left on Friday with the two opinions to be sought. And we just concur with Councillor Purvis, I'm extremely disappointed in to hear Mr Glenn's position on that. Thank you.
Councillor McDade, do you have a question? Lindsay Glover's having difficulty getting in, but Councillor McDade, please.
Yes, thank you Chair. I just wanted to understand a bit more from the Council Chief Executive regarding his position and that of the NHST side senior management. Because obviously there is national guidance on this, the national guidance does set out quite clearly that there should be a wide range of representation. And obviously the NHS and Perth and Kinross Council appointees appointment processes are for senior officers of those organisations and it's slightly different because obviously the public partners are members of the Board. So we're not asking to put people who are not members of the Board on this appointment panel, we're seeking to put a member of the Board on the appointment panel who happens to be one of the public partner nominees, which is fully in line with the national guidance. So I'd just like a bit more insight into why we've decided to deviate from the national guidance on this matter.
Thank you Chair, if you're content again, I'll have.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry Thomas, I think I was just allowing you to go straight into that one, thank you.
Thank you. I don't consider it to be a deviation, I consider it to be an interpretation. Having spoke to colleagues in NHST side, again, they are content that the process that has been proposed does offer involvement of directors in the process. The advice that I also got from colleagues in NHST side on Friday was that if there was a suggestion that we changed from the current proposal, then they would look to seek to confirm the guidance legally from within their organisation and that would further delay the process. And again, I'm, I'm very keen to ensure that we progress the appointment process as early as we can because I'm conscious that if we don't trigger that process this week, then we will see that process extend beyond the period of the current Council administration and we will have to wait until the Council has reformed post May and has then appointed directors to, to the IGB. So I'm keen for us to try and move on as quickly as we can.
Oh, sorry Sandra, are you coming back in again?
Yeah, I had to follow up if that's okay Chair.
Okay, and then I must bring in Ian who's been waiting patiently, thank you.
Thank you Chair. I'm slightly, I mean, thank you for the answer Chief Executive and I understand your position there. However, I'm slightly confused as to why the legal position wasn't sought in the last three weeks. I made a very specific request at the IGB meeting when we discussed this three weeks ago, which was I want detailed legal advice on this matter. So I'm slightly confused as to why we're being told today, three weeks later, that the legal advice hasn't been sought and the legal position and clarity from the government on this matter, if that is what's required, hasn't been sought. And so can you perhaps provide some detail as to why the request from the IGB has not been basically completed?
Again Chair, I'm assuming that you're happy to come in.
Of course, yes, it is directly to you, that's fine.
I'm aware Councillor McDade, that the Council's Chief Legal Advisor, Monetoff, was on the call and as a legal representative to the Board as well on Friday. And my understanding is that she, she did give advice in terms of her position and she was clear that in terms of what was being proposed was consistent with the guidance. So I don't think it's that legal advice hasn't been given. You were offered legal advice from the legal advisor to the Board and to the Council. Now, if subsequently, the position that the IGB chooses to take is that it doesn't choose to appoint and continues to ask for public partner directors, then I'm simply advising that that will delay the process and colleagues in NHS will review the position in terms of the advice at their end.
Okay, I'm going to quickly bring now Ian please and then I'll take Maureen Summers please and Sandra Ald and then I'd like to say something.
Thanks Bob. Can I first of all say to the Chief Executive, it's not our group, a small group of us who are holding this process up, if you don't mind me saying so, people like yourself who are failing to understand the simple fact that all members of this group, all members of the committee are entitled to be treated the same, with respect and understanding. All we're trying to do is to ensure the people we represent, their views are reflected in the interview process that comes around. And so you really got an easy answer here, if you could let me know. Has Bob and yourselves discussed a motion, Bob, that you're wanting to put to the meeting?
Yes, I'm not at that stage yet, but I was trying to, I was trying to convey something, but I'd like the Chief Executive to respond to your question Ian first.
Thank you again Chair. To be clear, there is no lack of respect at all Ian at this point in time. There is a process that we have set out. As there is a process for senior appointments within the Council, within NHST side, we're seeking to follow a well-worn and tried and tested process in terms of the appointments. The public partner directors will be involved in this process through the Stakeholder Panel, that's clearly been set out. And the IGB is being asked to appoint members of your Board, they just so happen to be members of NHST side and members of the Council, but it will be the IGB involved in the appointment of this Chief Officer post. So I don't think for a second there's any lack of respect.
Thank you very much. Can I bring in Maureen Summers and then Sandra Ald and then I'll take a question from Eric Drysdale before I come in please, thank you. Maureen.
Yes, I was unable to attend the meeting on Friday, but I did make a point over the weekend of watching the YouTube recording. And to be honest, I was of the impression that there had two amendments had been put forward to be voted on today. One to include a public partner on the Committee and one, I suppose, status quo. But I understood they were coming here for the voting members to vote what their preference was. It seems to be the NHST side is once again blocking any new proposals that come forward and that for any change. They don't like change. And as Callum pointed out, there are other IGBs in Scotland that are allowing public partners to participate in selection committees. And I just don't understand what the stumbling block is. It's like, this is the way we've always done it and don't disturb it, just leave it as it is. And it's really disappointing. And I suppose that you're supportive of not having public partners there, Bob, after hearing your comments at the meeting on Friday, so.
No, far from it.
Don't have the others feel, sorry?
Far from it, but carry on.
Yeah, well, that, I've said what I want to say and very disappointed in the whole process like and the fact that we just seem to be stuck in a rut here, you know. Where we're supposed to be encouraging public partners and the public in general to participate in our service, which actually is for them anyway. I don't see what the problem is, you know, but dig in the heels and again, you know, so.
Okay, Chief Executive, do you want to say anything further to that? I'm not sure it's a question directly for you, but if you wish to say something about it.
No, I don't think it requires a response from me at this point.
Okay, right, thank you. I'd like to take Sandra Ald and then finally take Councillor Drysdale.
Thank you, thank you Chair. Mr Glenn, another, another question for you. The public partners on the IGB are elected specifically to perform this role on the IGB. So they have been elected by carers, the service users have been elected by the Service User Reference Group. So just to make that specific point, that is our role, not to do, not to do anything else. I'd like to ask, I'm mindful of the timelines for this and bearing in mind that Gordon's resignation, you know, we're three months along the line from Gordon resigning, so I am extremely mindful. I'm also mindful that the proposal Councillor Purvis put forward specifically had a caveat around not delaying the process. The inclusion of a public partner in this process need not delay the process in any way whatsoever. And I'd like to understand what, what is seen, what you see as the downside of including a public partner in this process?
Thank you. As already stated, I think, a couple of times, I'm very clear that public partners will be involved in this process. They have a particular role in terms of the stakeholder session. Now, at the end of the day, it will be for the IGB to make a decision in terms of this motion. If the agreement is that you decide to proceed by appointing the two NHS and the two EDP and K directors, then we will progress on that basis if you choose not to and you make a decision that says you're still maintaining the principle of having a public partner director involved in that. I will go back and I'll have that conversation with colleagues in NHST side and I will seek to do all I can to ensure that we don't compromise the timescales that have been set to allow us to make appointments as early as we can.
Sounds like a threat to me.
I think I must respond to that because that was, that was an offer to ensure that whatever the decision of the IGB is, that we look to try and progress matters as quickly as possible. We had put in place an interim Chief Officer, which I believe everyone welcomed and was supportive of that appointment being made so that we didn't leave a gap in terms of Gordon's departure. That's been done and I'm sure everybody here wishes Jackie well in that appointment. My point Ian was very much to say that irrespective of what the decision of the Board is, I will do everything in my power to try and move the matters forward as quickly as we possibly can. And if that decision is to look to have a public sector partner involved, I will pick that up with colleagues in NHST side.
Well, can I just ask Bob a question? If that was the case, why aren't you just saying to us if we decide to this morning to proceed with an appointment of one of the partners, that you would just accept that decision and get on with the administration of it? You're talking about getting further legal advice going back, which is a way of saying I'm going to have further discussions with my colleagues. That, that doesn't seem to be in the spirit of cooperating, to be honest with you. Delaying mechanism by yourself, which is ironic.
No, not, not, not at all, I entirely disagree. I will offer the same courtesy to this Board that I would offer to my colleagues in NHST side and I would take back the position that the IGB has stated and I'll discuss that with colleagues in NHST side. And all I said at the beginning Ian was to advise you of my conversations with a member of the NHST side team at the end of last week and I will simply take it back, I will discuss and I could look to agree with them as quickly as possible to move matters forward. I simply stated what the view was from my colleague in NHST side in terms of confirming the legal position within NHST side.
Okay, thank you very much. And finally, Eric Drysdale.
Thank you, thank you Chair. I suppose my question is a variation on the theme of what Sandra asked, but slightly differently. But first of all, can I just say, you know, we're all trying to find a solution here and it would be helpful from my perspective if we tried to avoid accusations and interruptions during the process, as has already happened. And I mean, I think we need to continue this debate in a constructive way to try and find a way forward. And that's my comment, but my question, I guess, is if we find ourselves in the position here where there is a view of the Board that, that we do wish to appoint a public partner, not as part of the process, but directly involved in the appointments panel crucially, you know, and having the same weight of decision-making responsibility, if you like, as the rest of the panel members. What I would like to better understand, and this isn't necessarily an answer for this morning, it's an answer for if there is a continued objection on the part of either NHST side or Perth and Kinross Council, that exactly what is the basis of the objection to a public partner being added to, to the panel, you know. I mean Sandra used the phrase, what is the downside? But, you know, I just want to understand what is the objection, especially given, and Bob you will remember this, that we have sat in meetings with the Minister and the Minister has clearly appreciated the direction of travel that this Board is trying to take in terms of enhancing and eventually equalising when the legislation permits the role of public partners in the Integration Joint Board. Thanks.
Thomas?
As I say, it's not necessarily an answer for today, if Thomas isn't able to give it today, but that would be an answer I would seek down the line if, if need be.
Councillor Drysdale, if there's a decision of the Board to say it maintains an objection and it maintains a position that it wishes to see a public partner on the Board, then I will take that back, I will discuss that with NHST side. I'll confirm within Council that there's no legal impediment for us to do that and I will seek to arrive a resolution as early as we can. And I can assure you that I have no wish to try and kind of block the involvement of partners in the process. And I had thought that the involvement in the Stakeholder Group was the appropriate involvement because that's been an involvement that has been supported in various other recruitment processes. But if that's not the position that the IGB supports, I'll take that back and I'll discuss it with colleagues in NHST side and I'll look to come back with a positive response.
Thank you very much indeed. I'd like to ask a couple of questions, if I may Thomas. Irrespective of the discussions that take place between yourself and NHST side, should that necessarily inhibit the advert going out in terms of time scale? Because clearly, we all want to see this advert go out as quickly as possible as you do. Should that process inhibit the recruitment process given that the Appointment Group wouldn't be operating until I think sometime, at least a month, we haven't got the date in front of me now. appointment group wouldn't be operating until I think sometime, at least a month, we haven't got the date in front of me now, but can we proceed to issue that advert to ensure that we stay this side of the local government elections?
Chair, I don't know if Pauline Johnson had spoken on the call on Friday. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it. The advice just now is that that information should be included as part of the recruitment process just now, but I know that Pauline's on the call this morning and I'm sure we'll be happy to update. And just to be clear, Pauline is also still involved with colleagues in N H S T side to finalize that recruitment pack just now. So we still need to ensure that the recruitment pack that we issue is reflective of an appropriate wording and structure within the information that we send to prospective candidates. I don't know if you're happy for Pauline to convince you.
Paulie, do you want to add anything further to what Thomas has said?
Yeah, normally we would know who the panel members were so that we could be clear when we put the advert out because there's a candidate pack prepared for the candidates to actually see all the documentation, the advert, the person spec, and when they can expect to be engaged in activities. That's why we've confirmed the dates for the shortlist and, and the interview dates and potentially the stakeholder event. And that's why we've set them out. And as Thomas has indicated, we're still discussing the details of those packs with N H S T side with a view to them being released, the actual members of the panel themselves. And we don't need to know that for the advert to go live.
Thank you very much indeed. Thomas, can I ask you another question, please? I think the issues that councillor Drysdale and others have raised have been about the role of, of public partners. There is at the very least a strong case that's developed for having an advisory place as opposed to a voting place. Could that be part of the discussion?
Chair, I'm, I'm happy if that's the decision that the board makes in terms of its position, I will take that back. And I'll discuss that with colleagues in N H S T side and whether that's as a full voting member or, or as an advisor. I'll take that back, discuss them.
Right, thank you. And the other question is about the stakeholder participation group, which is the, the ordinary way in which the stakeholder interests are done. Given the strength of view on this, and normally the stakeholder participation group tends to be a very large number of people from a whole range of different interests. Would it be possible if Salamons could have a specific one for the interest groups that represent carers and service users that essentially the, the public partners come from? Would it be possible to beef that side of it up? That might at least take us some of the road down if we can't move to the other position. Although that's not where the committee seems to be at the moment, or the board seems to be at the moment. Yeah.
Chair, my understanding is that, that that process hasn't been finalized. So again, there's an opportunity to influence and shape that. And I'm, I'm sure Pauline could, could add to that, but, but in principle, I don't see that being a problem.
Okay, I need some direction now from the, from the board. Given what the chief executive has said. Are we going to make?
Sorry Chair, I had my.
Sorry Pat, I didn't, sorry Pat, I, I was too busy looking at Thomas. Carry on Pat.
I, I, I think your suggestion of an advisor is a good one. I, I do think that because it gives public partners a seat at, at the, at the discussion, at the recruitment process. I think it, it might be important, I'm, I'm just trying to second guess because I'm not a public partner. But what's their, what is the role of an advisor? And what can an advisor do? Are they observing the process? Do they get to comment? Do they get to take part in the candidate scoring? And okay, they, they probably won't have a, well, they won't have a final vote on the candidate, but do they, you know? I, I think it would be useful maybe Chair to understand what that would involve and what kind of, what kind of opportunities that would give them. Because I think, you know, obviously that's the main concern here, that, you know, they're, that, that they're not getting an opportunity to select a candidate that they think will best represent, you know, their, their perspective as a, as a public partner, as opposed to from an organizational perspective, which, which we are coming from big organizations. So I completely understand that. But I think it would be important, I don't know if you can elaborate a little bit on that and what your view or how you see that working Chair? I think it's a really good suggestion.
Thanks very much. I had seen it as an advisor, that means that they would have a voice and they would be allowed to make comment in terms of candidates' responses to the various questions that were being asked. And that would be done as it usually is at the end of the process, when the candidates aren't there, as part of the general wrap-up that people have when they come to determine their scoring. And it would be useful to have a, 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 a P P advisory into that. And it would be up to the voting members at the interview to determine what weight that might carry or not. And I see it simply as that, but we haven't really got to that, the detail of that because the substantive point where we are at the moment is really about whether that is allowable or not. And I think that if, if we, if, if that's, if the role of public partners was taken in within the, the final system for appointment, then we could determine that in terms of what the parameters of that would be. But that's not something I would do on my own. I'm merely suggesting that that would be something we would discuss with the, whoever the public partner was that was involved in that process. And the kind of things that we would be looking at, and clearly that would be around the competency areas as all candidates have to address. But that would be how I would go about doing it.
Thank you, that's very helpful Chair.
Okay. I'm going to take Donald back first and then first Maureen, if you don't mind. And then I'll come back to you, Donald.
Thank, thank you Chair. I mean, it, it does feel as if we're in quite a similar position to where we were on Friday. But I think this advisory role maybe does help to move us forward. So let's, let's just try and analyze the situation for a moment. And the way that the I G B is constructed at the moment, we have voting members and we have the, the non-voting public partners. They, they have a voice at these meetings, they can put forward their views, they can engage. The thing that they cannot do is vote. And that, that, I'm not here to debate the merits of that. That is just the facts of the situation that we find ourselves in. Now, from the comments that I made on Friday, I think it would probably be clear that I'm not convinced that including the public partners in a much wider stakeholder group, because they are large groups, they are diverse. And I'm concerned that the public partners might not get their sufficient share of voice through that mechanism. So I think this advisory involvement in the panel actually deserves looking at. It does mean, if I understand others' proposals, that the public partner representative would not have a vote. But that's consistent with the position that the public partner members have on the I G B. I don't think, from my mind, I don't think that simply saying, this is the way we have always done this. This is the way we should continue to do it, is sufficient from my mind. I think we, we certainly haven't had any legal advice that we cannot include a public partner. We have got national guidance that indicates we can. But the other thing that we have here is a logjam. And I think we all want to get on and deal with, with this appointment. I think we need to find a route through that and certainly what the Chair has suggested of inclusion of one public partner advisory member on the panel, it seems like a proposal that, that would move us forward. So I think it really does have, have, have mileage. So there's, that, that's my input on this.
Right, thank you. And I'm going to take, go back to, I think it was Maureen Summers. And then I think we now need to move on. I know Sandra wants to come in as well, but we, we're, if we're saying many of the same things. Okay, Maureen, please.
Yes, there was two or three points I wanted to comment on. What was it to, if you're following legal advice and all the rest of it, what about the other boards in Scotland that are including public partners? Does that imply that they are operating illegally? And also, the comments that were made about disruption and that, I thought that everyone has commented so far has they done so in a, a proper fashion. And also, including public partners only in stakeholder groups is watering down the involvement, you know? A stakeholder group, there's got to be lots of people. And we do engage with lots of people all the time, carers and, and members of the public through the, the reference group and the carer's voice. And we, we come with a wide range of views and ideas when we come, not just speaking, you know, from a, for ourselves, we are speaking for a lot of people. And, and I feel that that is important because the emphasis now seems to be on listening to people's stories involving people at grassroots, rather than it all being, you know, professionally led. And I think that N H S T side will be making a big mistake if they don't listen to this and, and act accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Sandra, and I'm reading the chat box as well. Sandra, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you Chair, and I appreciate you all looking to wrap up the discussion soon. I mean, I, I think at least a non-voting member on the panel is a move in the right direction. Although I think there should be, I think there should be parity and I think it should be voting. I don't think it should be called an advisor, I think it should be a non-voting member because that's what they are on the board. But I think we're moving in the right direction and I appreciate you making a suggestion at least. And I want to come back to something councillor chief executives said and answered someone else's question. And he talked about seeking advice, you know, guidance on this within the council. And my understanding certainly, you know, across the board anyway, this board anyway, and the political. This councillor chief executive just dropped off the call perhaps. And is that, I don't know, is that there is widespread support for public partner involvement? And therefore, politically, within the council, and this is supported in that the issue is at an officer level. And so I, I don't quite understand. I appreciate he's saying he would go back and speak to N H S T side. And but can he confirm that within the council, and there is no objections to a public partner rest?
Thomas?
Chair, I'm happy to confirm that's the case, that's my position.
Wonderful, thank you very much for confirming that, Chief Executives.
Okay then, Donald, and I really do want to make this final comment, please.
Thank, thank you Chair. Sorry, I was, I was, I was reluctant to start a debate in the, the chat column. I thought that probably wasn't helpful at this stage in the process. But I did just want to respond to the, the question that councillor Purvis put in the chat around why the chief executives should have a vote on, on the group. And I, I think my answer to that one is straightforward that as well as the I G B appointing its chief officer, the two chief executives are recruiting for a senior membership of their respective leadership teams. And I think that to me is the, the distinction there.
I think that's absolutely correct, Donald. Councillor Purvis?
It was just very brief, it was just very briefly Chair to, to come back on that. That's not what the legislation says, the section 10 of the legislation is quite explicit that it is for the I G B to appoint a chief officer, not for the partners. And I don't understand why this, why this line is continuing to be pushed. And that the partners then have a duty to recruit that person if they're not already a member. And if they are already a member of staff of one of the partners, to second that person to the I G B. So it's an I G B appointment, not a partner appointment. And the final point is that, looking at some, as I mentioned at the last meeting, looking at some other I G Bs that have gone through similar appointment processes, the chief executives were advisors in that process and not full participants of the panel. And I just can't understand why we would be looking to make public partners simply advisors, but chief executives who are officials and executive functions and not members of this board at all, never mind non-voting members, why they should have a full role in this process.
Thanks very much indeed. But we could have these discussions for a very long time. But I'm now left with the situation as Chair as to how to proceed with this.
Chair, if I might just intercede just for one moment, sorry to interrupt you Bob. I'm receiving a message here saying that there are currently 12 people waiting to join the Audit and Performance Committee meeting. Would it be possible for Audrey or Magda to communicate with them and tell them to go and have a, a, a long walk and come back at a particular time?
Well, I think, I think we knew this might happen to anybody. I think we'd predicted there would be a delay because of the nature of what we're going to discuss this morning. In terms of how to proceed on this, we have, we have the options to continue with the recommendations within the paper, which was for four voting members of the I G B to form part of the appointment subcommittee. Or we have other options as well. So I need to hear where we are with this in terms of is there support for the four voting members of the I G B for names to be put forward? As was recommended within the paper?
Chair, we've got a message in the chat from councillor Purvis who I think wants to move a motion.
I think that might help. Councillor Purvis?
Thank you Chair, I'm happy to move a motion, which would be a revised version of my amendment from Friday. Thank you for the responses from the councillor chief executive. And also, it's been interesting to listen to the discussion. And, you know, my view remains that it is for the I G B to make this appointment and that not for the partners. All the partners do have a right to be consulted. And so I would like to move that we proceed with the panel as suggested in the paper. And while I've made the point about the chief executives, I'm not sure that there is support for my, my thinking on that. So those would be six members who would all be full participants. And but also a seventh member who would be a public partner and who would be a full member of the process. I think that that is reasonable. I think that that properly values the role of public partners. And they are not simply stakeholders in, in the way that through other appointment processes like the councillor chief executive or N H S T side, and they are, they are full members of this board. The only difference is they don't have a vote. And actually, the national direction of travel is that they may well have a vote at some point in the near future. So I think that we need to show that we properly value the role of council, of public partners. And that would be my, my motion that we have a seven-member panel, all of equal standing. And one of those is a public partner. And I think that's, that's a reasonable proposition. And so if I have a second or then, happy to proceed.
Is there a second or for this motion?
Yes, I'm happy to second Chair. I think that this allows us to proceed. And I thank councillor chief executive for explaining that he is in support of this position and he will happily go back and speak to N H S T side if this is the direction of the board. And I think that is important. And I think it is important this board shows that we value our public partners and the wider public. And I think that is important. I think it is important this board shows that we value our public partners and the wider public. Because, you know, they are the people that we are here to serve. And I think it's absolutely right that there should be at least one of their representatives on the panel who is a member of this board. The only thing, as councillor Purvis says, that distinguishes them from us as council nominees, NHS T side board nominees, is they do not have a vote. But that is something that is currently under active national discussion. And so therefore, I think that in line with the national guidance that says we should do this and in line with the principles of involving people as much as possible, this is not a big increase in the panel, up to six from seven. Therefore, I would support the motion. And that if that is the direction of the board, the Council Chief Executive has already confirmed he will go and make representations to NHS T side on behalf of the board.
Okay, well, thanks for seconding. That was a very long seconding. But, okay, Scott, can we now proceed to vote on that motion?
Chair, just in terms of the motion, I wonder if it would be helpful, as well as setting out the number of people, it may be helpful, as we did on Friday, to stipulate who the names were, particularly in terms of the voting members. I know that we did say that it might be that in terms of a public partner, that might to be taken forward following the meeting. But I think it would be helpful to state who the names of the, all of the members are as much as possible as part of any motion.
I think one of my problems with that is that might create another whole list of potential nominees. And I'm wondering if the arguments about principle rather than names, would that be correct, Councillor Purvis?
And I think that is the issue where there's the difference of opinion, although I accept the clerk's point that that is within. Would you require to appoint members to the panel? So I don't know, would that require a further meeting then to consider that? So perhaps it might be easier. I'm happy with whatever the clerk thinks would be helpful to move business along.
I think, you know, my advice to the board would be wherever possible, if we could agree that the names today, it's up to the board. If they did want to, you ask the Chair to get agreement among the voting members offline. I'm just conscious of, you know, that we've obviously been debating this over three meetings now. I think if possible, my advice would be that it would be helpful to the board to try and agree those names today.
Okay. In that case, if we need to determine board nominees, then I would propose myself, Beth Hamilton, councillor Drysdale and councillor Duff.
Well, I would like to object to that, since there's an agreement between councillor Drysdale and myself on this particular matter.
Clerk, would it be competent to take a decision on the panel shape in terms of the number of each type of individual? And then to take a decision on the, on the membership? Because there might be some people who disagree with the membership but who agree with principle and vice versa. And perhaps we maybe are confusing the issues, I don't know.
Yeah, if the board, sorry, Chair, if the board wished to purely agree on the composition of the panel to deal with that matter first, then that would be competent if you wish to do it in two stages, whether that be the second stage today or whether that be the second stage at a further meeting.
I would prefer to do it today, but.
I just, I agree with councillor Purvis. I think, you know, this has gone on a long time. I think we should agree. If we've got agreement on the principle, let's also need to give the public partners an opportunity to have a discussion amongst themselves about who they wish to nominate. You're bouncing them into making a decision, I think, having only agreed during the last two minutes that you'll let them sit on the committee. So I think it would be good to agree the principle and then we can come back in short order, I think, Chair, with the names, if that's agreeable.
I think that's probably the only way to proceed now, actually. I don't think we can name names at this stage. Can we vote on the principle then of having the four voting, so, sorry, four voting members plus, we're not arguing about the chief execs, because that's already contained within it, as far as I understand, and have full participation of one public partner. So we're really talking about four current voting members plus one public partner, all with equal status. I presume that's what the principle is.
So Chair, we've now got the motion on the table from councillor Purvis and McDade, as I say, to agree the six. The two Perth and Kinnos council members, voting members, the two NHS board as voting members, the two chief executives as voting members and one public partner, non-voting, who would be a full member of the board. So the board's now either to agree that or if there's a different view, then we need a voting member to put forward an amendment to that.
Any amendments? Okay.
So if there are no, if there are no amendments, then the board are agreeing to the motion from councillor Purvis and McDade. I think it's probably worthwhile noting that, you know, that's the view of the IGB. As the chief executive of the council did acknowledge that he, this will be fed back to both the council and NHS T side for them to take a view on that. But the collective view of the board, councillor Purvis and McDade. So it's now whether you now want to consider agreeing the membership today or whether you wish to leave that for another meeting.
I think I'd rather get the principle out of the way first of all, and then talk about the membership.
Chair, you've got, there's a point of order from the vice chair.
Eric?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, so I think we have now thankfully established the principle of the the agreed view of the Integration Joint Board is as set out by Scott, i.e. two members of Perth and Kinnos Council, two members of NHS or representatives of NHS T side and one public partner plus the two chief executives of both. Well, if there are no objections from the chief executive of NHS T side, will be the structure of the panel. And so the next stage would be to seek to determine the members, the identity of the members who would make up that panel. And we have already rehearsed here that, you know, we do not want to bump any cohort into their nominations without due thought. But my main point of order here is, as I indicated a few minutes ago, there is a 30 minutes overdue meeting of the Audit and Performance Committee, at which a number of people are waiting to join. And I think it would be hugely disrespectful to them and to that meeting if we were to continue to debate long into the morning, who may or may not wish to stand and who, you know, may be voted for or not by colleagues. So I would propose that this meeting be ended at this stage and the Audit and Performance Committee be allowed to commence in short order and that we revert later this week, perhaps, once we have the benefit of the views of NHS T side to decide on the identity of the members. Thank you.
That sounds like a reasonable way forward, given that we could be some time before we get to nominations. Would the board be content with that approach until we get response from NHS T side and Perth and Kinnos Council as to the proposals put forward, which essentially is about equity? And I see that as one potential way forward. Otherwise, I think we could be here for a very, very long time today, as councillor Drysdale has suggested.
Chair, if I can just come in just on that point, by councillor Drysdale, I'm quite happy that we wrapped this up now. And can we just follow normal procedure around this would be that the nominations for the committees for the IGB is made by the respective partners? So can we just agree that public partners will nominate someone? That the Perth and Kinnos council nominees will nominate two people and NHS T side board members will nominate two people? And they can just inform the clerk of that decision and that will be the composition agreed and we don't have to come back for another further meeting? That seems like the easiest way to proceed with this and that we can just end the meeting today.
I don't see any further comment to that. I'm happy to proceed on that basis, if that's how it's done. And I noticed that Jackie Pepper wants to come in. Jackie, do you want to verbalise what you've just written down in the chat box? Because again, your question is about, will this process impede or not impede the proposed timescale for advert recruitment, which was precisely my question earlier on. I think we would, sorry, Jackie, do you want to come in now?
Apologies, yeah. It was really just, given that we have Pauline here from HR, I just wondered if that question could be put to Pauline? Because if the decision is to delay until later in the week, I just wondered if there is likely to be an impact on the timescales. Thanks.
Pauline?
No, it won't impact on the timescales for advert, because we don't need to know the panel members. Anybody who is nominated needs to make themselves available on the dates that's in the paper that was shared for last week in terms of shortlisting and the interview day, because those dates are fixed. So whoever nominates themselves from each partner will need to determine that. NHS T side will need to agree to change in the recruitment process to add the seventh member. Because that's obviously a change to the joint recruitment process that we have agreed between the partners.
Okay. Right, well, that's helpful in terms of not holding up the advert. And we would need to get a pretty speedy response to it. I think that we move with the proposal that's been, that was put earlier on, there are any objections to it about full equity. And I think on that basis, we now need to get advice back again and decision from PKC and NHS T side regarding this principle proposal. And I think we have to leave it at that because there's not much more we can do. We'd already made nominations anyway. I don't think that's going to be the key issue now. I think the key issue now is about whether the principle has been accepted or not. Okay, our folks will check with that.
Chair, can I just summarise the position, just so that I'm absolutely clear in terms of the decision and make a suggestion for moving forward? So my understanding is that we've agreed the composition of the panel, the two councillors, two NHS board members, the two chief executives and a non-voting public partner from the IGB. Again, my understanding, and Pauline will correct me if I'm wrong, is that that will allow us to release the advert and to continue with the timescales on that. In terms of the decision of the board today, I'm happy on behalf of you, Chair, to write to the two chief executives of NHS T side in the council and to formally communicate that. And that allows the process to take place that the chief executive of the council alluded to and to get feedback from NHS T side of whether there's agreement on the seventh panel member. And then we will feed that back to all IGB members as soon as possible. If there's not agreement, then I think we're in the situation where we need to call a further special meeting of the board as soon as possible. And just finally, if there is agreement on the membership of the panels, we ask, I'm happy as clerk of the board to write out to all the public partners to seek a nomination for the single member and also to seek nominations from both the council and NHS T side, as councillor McDade alluded to, to fill the other positions on the panel, given that the IGB have taken a collective view that it be two Perth and Kinnos council and two NHS T side. Sorry, that was a bit long-winded, but I just needed to be clear so that the board.
Scott, I do appreciate that because I've never gone through this process before. But I think it'd be helpful, if we could have a copy of the letter that you sent to the two chief execs, they could go to the board too, please, so that they were all clear in terms of just what's being said and understood. Okay, given that position, I will now formally close the business meeting and we await response. And then we will convene another special IGB, hopefully very soon. Thank you very much indeed for your patience and participation. But I have to say, this is a very much a groundbreaking step forward for the IGB. And we need to just recognise it as such, irrespective of whatever the outcome is. Thank you very much indeed. And thank you very much for all of your involvement. Thank you.